We will call the meeting to order. If you'll all please rise for the invocation by Supervisor Watson and the Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Sockwell.
Heavenly Father, we are quickly approaching Election Day and we will be exercising our right to vote. We ask that you encourage and guide each of us in our decisions and that no one take this honor and privilege lightly. We are thankful for the men and women who have fought and died to give us this right to decide the leaders. We pray for peace within ourselves and throughout the world. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion for an executive session to be held November 5th at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation.
So good.
Motion in second, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Committee of your legislative reports, Supervisor Sockwell.
I attended the CSA Legislative Summit in Sierra Vista. There wasn't a lot of items discussed. There was about three or four main items that would be carrying forward, such as her funds, one of the big ones, but it was a good meeting and everything went well.
Thank you. Supervisor Watson?
Yes, I do. I'd like to report to you this morning that Ms. Roxanne Wells, the Director of our local Head Start for WACOG, will be leaving for a new job up in North Dakota. Like it to be recognized that Ms. Wells brought some national recognition for everything that was done for our Head Start program in our area. She did an excellent job and we'll be sorry to see her leave.
Thank you. I attended the Arizona Association of Counties meetings and we went over legislative proposals for the coming year. These will be voted on in our next meeting. I sent them to the County Manager to get to everybody, Supervisors and staff, so any information or corrections or any heartburn you have, we can get back and try to take care of it. County Manager report, Mr. LeVak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd ask Mr. Lotosky to come up and present a quick update on the use of our Highway Safety Improvement Program funds in the District, New District Five area on County Route One and the Oatman Highway down in the Golden Shores area.
Good morning, Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Watson, Supervisor Sockwell. I believe we also have a brief presentation in support of this update, which is a report on the status and opportunities for traffic operations improvements for up to three intersections in the Golden Shores area, primarily County Route One at Powell Lake Road and Golden Shores Parkway, also Olton Highway at Powell Lake Road and County Route One at Oatman Highway. The Western Arizona Council of Governments and its member agencies, including Mojave County, the four cities within Mojave County, La Paz County and Quartzsite, receive about $600,000 of federal Highway Safety Improvement Program funds annually. And staff was successful in programming approximately $950,000 toward federal funds, HSIP funds, requiring only a 5.7% local match for improvements to the Golden Shores intersections. We started with the six-legged intersection at CR1 at Oatman Highway, Powell Lake, at CR1 at Powell Lake Road, Golden Shores Parkway, but further expanded our review of potential traffic operations improvements at the other adjoining intersections. And what staff was successful in achieving was, we obtained at no cost to the county, an Arizona Department of Transportation Road Safety Audit, where ADOT had two of its traffic safety engineers travel in Mojave County for a period of, I believe, two full days in study, along with county staff, and we actually had Bullhead City have a representative just to get some additional persons involved that can kind of look at the needs of these intersections from an objective standpoint, from an engineering standpoint. So we achieved that in June, and the outcome of the Road Safety Audit indicated that there were some needs at all three intersections. Again, we were starting with that six-legged approach, six-leg intersection approach, and really focusing in on some traffic operations need for that intersection, but realizing that the other two intersections at Oatman Highway and Powell Lake, as well as Oatman Highway at CR1, kind of factored into the whole system traffic operations, we branched that Road Safety Audit out to those two intersections as well. And that Road Safety Audit is actually serving as a means for justifying our application through ADOT and federal highways for approval of the programmed funds. The funds are currently programmed through WACOG for Mojave County use, however, there is a formal application process that Mojave County submits through ADOT and federal highways for final approval of the funding. So just want to do a snapshot of the needs of the three intersections. At CR1 at Oatman Highway, you'll see in the, with the green arrow indicating that there is a need for a realignment of the intersection to provide more of a right angle alignment of Oatman Highway as it transitions into County Route One, as well as a need for channelized right turns for southbound Oatman Highway to County Route One heading northbound toward the Greater Mojave Valley, Bullhead City area. At Oatman Highway at Powell Lake Road, just further north, you'll see by the green arrows, there's a considerably misaligned intersection where Powell Lake Road and its two approaches to Oatman Highway are currently offset. And for traffic operations perspective, there would be a potential need to realign those intersection approaches. And lastly, at that six-leg approach, at CR1 at Powell Lake Road, Golden Shores, there's a real need for consideration for approach consolidation as well as a realignment. So where we're at right now is, the county has made formal application, has submitted that Road Safety Audit results, which promote those needs, and we're anticipating a favorable review by ADOT and federal highways to finalize that $950,000 of federal funds that have been programmed through WACOG for these improvements. And the next step would be upon receiving that thumbs up from federal highways, we would formalize federal highways approval in the form of an intergovernmental agreement and bring that back before the Board of Supervisors for approval in order to move ahead with the project design and construction. Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions.
Appreciate it. You guys have done a lot of work out there. I know it's been a problem for the people for a number of years, and I'm glad to see you were able to get some federal funds to help us out and offset the cost of the county. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. LeVak?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
We have no meeting minutes. I have a proclamation. This being Cyber Security Awareness Month, and in lieu of reading the proclamation, I'd like to have Nathan McDaniel, our Director of Information and Technology, to come forward to update us on what's going on with Cyber Security Month and also what's going on with IT.
Morning Chairman, morning Supervisors, Staff. The 9th Annual National Security Awareness Month is being celebrated during October 2012 as a collective effort among the multi-state information sharing and analysis center, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security's National Cyber Security Division, and the National Cyber Security Alliance, and the National Association of State Chief Information Officers. This proclamation highlights the importance of empowering citizens, businesses, governments, and schools to improve their cybersecurity preparedness. In this digital age, we are all connected. The actions of one can impact many, thus it is essential that each of us understand our important role in securing cybersecurity. During the Cyber Security Awareness Month, Mojave County will be participating in the Stop, Think, Connect campaign. We will be sharing daily updates via the county's Twitter site, @MojaveCounty. These tips will be very informative and assist members of our community in staying safe online. I'd also like to take some time to announce that on October 16th tomorrow, Information Technology will be releasing the new version of the Mojave County website. The website can be accessed by visiting www.mojavecounty.us. Eric Advincula, the county's web developer, has been working diligently revising and redesigning the county's website. The primary design goal of this version of the website is to enhance security, usability, and accessibility of information. I'd like to highlight some of the new features of the county website real quick, and then I prepared a little presentation, which is screenshots of the website. That way, members of our community can be familiar with what the site's going to look like before we unveil it tomorrow. The highlights of the county website are calendar events, press releases, and highlights section will be much more visible and accessible than previously before. And Matt, if you want to... So there's a look at the website. It's up on the projectors. That's the new look. And the calendar events are going to be dead center in the middle of the page. Previously, the old website lacked dynamic content. There was a very small section of the page that was actually updated. The rest of it was static, so one of the big goals was to make the primary presence of the page active content. So in the center of the page, the calendar events will be displayed by putting your mouse over this calendar events tab. There's a press releases section, which is right next to it, and then lastly, there's a highlights section. One of the other major functionality pieces of the county website is to provide access to on-demand county videos for Planning and Zoning Commission, Board of Supervisors meetings, and any other videos that the county decides to make publicly available. So this control on the front page is linking to a YouTube channel that was created for Mojave County, and that's where we're going to be sharing all of our on-demand videos with the general public. Next section is the GIS map viewer, and right here on the right, where it says County Maps, we are displaying a link to each one of the incorporated cities in Mojave County. If you click any one of these links, it will take you to the county's GIS map viewer and zoom you right to that city. Once you're in the map viewer, there's also a bookmark section where you can click the drop-down box and select almost every city in Mojave County, and the GIS system will zoom you right to that location. The next section of the website that I'd like to speak about is the Popular Services section. This is a collection of online services that we're making available to the general public via the county's website, and we feel this section is where we're going to put the most popular ones. Another area of the website that we're doing is the Services section. In the previous version of the website, it was called E-Government. We've renamed that to Services. That way, it's a little bit more user-friendly. And the last section I'd like to talk about is the online, it's the Dynamic Language Translation piece of the website. So if you visit our website, on any of the pages in the new version, you'll be able to go to the bottom of the page and click this Select Language bar, and the system will dynamically convert the page to whatever language you're looking for. And those are pretty much the new features of the website, other than the look and feel is different, and that's all I have. Any questions?
Any questions?
No questions.
Thank you very much.
It looks like it's going to be a lot more user-friendly. You guys spent a lot of time on that, and I appreciate all the work you've put into it. Going back to the cybersecurity, these tweets are going out every day, and like you said, they're on our webpage, so if anybody, you know, open anybody in the public, so if you got grandkids or kids or want to get your kids on them for updates on protecting themselves and protecting your family too, because a lot of times right now, I think the biggest crimes that are going on is identity theft of children, because then you don't realize it until they're getting to be 18 and start using something, so people are doing that. And also, we have webinars available that people can log into and participate through the internet to get more information on protecting themselves and their families too, so I think that's...
Yeah, if I could, real quick, we did a press release last week on the existing version of the website, and in that press release, it talks about Cyber Security Awareness Month, the new version of the website. And in that press release, there's also links to the county's Twitter site, staysafeonline.org, which is one of the Cyber Security Awareness Month websites, and also there's a link to the webinar series that's being put on by NACO that all members of the general public can sign up to be a part of.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let me get Sean Blackburn, our Parks Administrator, to come forward, please.
Hi, Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Watson, Supervisor Sockwell. Thank you for this time, and I would like to start by introducing Sean Blackburn, who has been the Mojave County Parks Administrator for over a decade. He manages our Davis Camp and Walpai Mountain Regional Parks, which collectively attract a quarter million visitors annually and receive recognition and accolades through numerous travel-based publications. In fact, Fodder's, a worldwide, a leading worldwide travel guide, cites Walpai Mountain Park as one of only three Fodder's Choice Sites in Northwest Arizona and Southeast Nevada. Sean also manages four county park, community parks in Butler, Golden Valley, Chloride, and Dolan Springs. Mojave County Parks is wholly self-sustaining, with its operational and capital expenses funded entirely through park user fees. Sean's efforts in identifying and securing grant awards for park facility improvements is truly impressive, as you will see.
Sean?
Thank you.
Supervisor Johnson, Supervisor Watson, Supervisor Sockwell. Just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to come up here and show you what we've been up to the past several years with the support of this board and some projects that we put The slides that we're rolling through right now, Grants Build Parks, and the grants that you supply are the capital improvement dollars that build our parks. Recently, we did the Elk Ridge RV area there through the Off-Road Highway User Fund. This is a totlot area that we did at Walpai Mountain Park for the Recreation Trails Program. We did a Dolan Springs Open Space Grant recently that this board approved the application for, and that's still pending. The, today's motion is going to be for Davis Camp. There's a lot of maintenance that needs to be done there, peeling, paint, roofs are wearing out. There's a lot of hardware on buildings, on our vacation homes, that have been needing repairs, carpentry work on faces, and complete building remodels in some cases here. So, you know, and if it wasn't for your support on these applications and allowing us to go out and seek these revenues, we wouldn't be able to accomplish any of this, and so I just wanted to thank you for your continued support of the Mojave County Parks Program and all these grant programs that we participate in.
Any questions of Mr. Blackburn?
No, I'd just like to thank you and all the employees for the work that you've done on our parks.
And then, I mean, people have to understand, besides, like I said, you are self-sufficient. Tax dollars don't flow in, and by you going out and getting more applications, you're actually able to upgrade and keep it the high quality that they are, because if they start going down, then there will be no parks in Mojave County. So we appreciate all the work you do and your attention to detail in getting all these grants.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Ms. Patty Mead, the Director of Public Health, to come forward for some state awards we've received.
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Watson, Supervisor Sockwell, I am honored today to announce that our Tobacco Use and Chronic Disease Prevention Program has been presented with three state awards this year. The Arizona Department of Health Services awarded Mojave County their annual Most Valuable Partner of Excellence Award for the program's ability to promote public policy that reduce the impact of commercial tobacco use. ADHS Bureau Chief Wayne Termala states that these outstanding programs are to be congratulated for contributing to the steady decrease in tobacco use in our state. Smoking prevalence is down 15% in Arizona compared to 19% annually, or nationally, pardon me. The program was recognized for their efforts in youth coalition development, their collaboration with the schools, and their continuous education and services to help smokers quit. Our Program for Chronic Disease Self-Management was also recognized for merit. This program provides tools and education to individuals with chronic disease to them, for them to manage and hopefully improve their condition. This self-management is accomplished through, but not limited to, personal action plans, healthier living practices, managing symptom cycles, and problem solving. It is a program for people who want to control their chronic condition rather than have their chronic condition control them. Carol Smith Carter and Lynn Steiger have been heading this program up. And last but not least, we received the Award of Excellence for our KICKBUT, which stands for Kingman Youth Coalition Beating Up Teen Tobacco Program. Annie Meredith works here in Kingman with the youth, and their project has been to reduce exposure to secondhand smoke through the Kingman Public Parks and Ballfields. The youth made great strides in educating the Kingman City Council and other community city boards on the hazards of tobacco in Kingman Parks and Ballfields, including the need to pass a tobacco-free ordinance to protect Kingman citizens. The goal is to reduce the exposure of secondhand smoke and tobacco litter in the parks and ballfields by creating and adopting a tobacco-free ordinance, which was passed last week by unanimous vote. Although it wasn't an ordinance, it was actually a Smoke-Free Zone Pilot Program that will cover three parks and ballfields. Annie worked closely with Kingman High School and Kingman Academy of Learning Students. They're also getting a civic lesson as they work through their efforts in educating the public on the hazards of tobacco use. When Susan and her team started the Tobacco Association Program years ago, we had a 33.5% smoking rate. We now have a 26.1% rate. That's still high, but as you know, in public health, sometimes it takes a long time to make a difference, and we are making a difference in the lives of our citizens every day, and I just want to say how very proud I am of all of you. Thank you for your good work.
Do you have awards that, you have the awards here? Now, these awards, we got moved into the large counties category now, right?
Yes, sir, we did.
So that's really quite an accomplishment, I mean, to go up against Maricopa and Pima, and if the board wants to go down front, we'll... Run down top and... Stand up straight, we'll do it. Thank you. dollars, with a minimal amount with the public works for matching, but saved taxpayers an awful lot of money and got some really good accomplishments. Next up is our consent. We will take it as one motion. I've been requested to remove item number 45, just to change some wording. Is there any other items that you'd like removed, Supervisor Sockwell?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three. Supervisor Watson?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Forty-three.
Forty-three.
Sixty.
Sixty.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. I need a motion to approve the consent minus items thirty-nine, forty-three, forty-five, sixty, sixty-five, and seventy-three.
Still moved?
So good.
A motion in second, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And post same sign, motion carries. Item number thirty-nine is approved Amendment Two to a Contract for Cattle Guard. Supervisor Watson?
Motion for discussion?
So good.
I see we have the contract for it, but my question is essentially, what is the cost? There are no costs included in the contract.
Mr. Lotosky, or Annie?
Chairman Johnson, Supervisors Watson and Sockwell, this contract is actually in its second year of renewal, and as to the cost, it was very specific about the individual pieces. Let me just find that here. Let me see. Okay. For, and there's different parts to it, so you want me to read off all of these parts?
Not necessarily. Just, there are probably two or three standard cattle guard sizes.
Well, there's a cattle guard and in grill, that's $2,590.50, and then there's a cattle guard middle and grill, which is $2,452.65. And their prices have not increased since the contract was initially awarded.
Okay. Answers my question.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Supervisor Watson?
Motion to approve.
So good.
Motion in second, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And post same sign, motion carries. Item number forty-three is approved, the sole source purchased in accordance with Mojave County Procurement Code. Supervisor Watson?
Motion for discussion?
Second.
So good.
Yes, if I could ask for Gene Helfner for a little explanation. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Sockwell and Watson. The NexTech GPS system was instituted in 2007, and it's used for our vehicle safety program. And our insurance pool, the Arizona Insurance Pool, with 11 members' counties have gotten together and decided to use these units in our vehicles. And Graham and Navajo County, and along with our county, have implemented to all our fleet vehicles the ability to track the speed and where they're at in case a vehicle breaks down. We know where they're at, similar to what we use with our heavy equipment. Eleven sheriffs units, or eleven of the sheriff's office have implemented and use it in their inmate transportation units, or transport units. And the reason why we're doing that is looking at the liability. It has decreased some of our speeding and improved our driving of our vehicles. Any other?
I just have... Supervisor Watson? Yes, thank you, Mr. Helfner. Could you indicate to me about the portion that the sheriff's office uses of this, of this contract?
Yes, of the units we have, 68 of them are paid by the insurance pool that are on the inmate transportation, and that's totally picked up by the insurance pool because of the capability and the liability issue that we look at. It has improved those exposures.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do we have a motion, Supervisor Watson?
Motion to approve.
So good.
A motion in second, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And post same sign, motion carries. Item number forty-five, I will bring back for discussion. We have a new motion on item...
Mr. Chairman, we, the, we changed the motion on item forty-five. I will read it. Ratified disposal of county surplus cathode ray tube CRT, computer monitors with West Tech recyclers, Phoenix, Arizona, at no cost. At the county hosted household hazardous waste collection event scheduled October the 6th, 2012, at the Mojave County Fairgrounds, which is deemed as the best, beamed in the best interest of Mojave County in accordance with ARS 11-251, and authorize county staff to sign all necessary documents on behalf of the county as part of the disposal.
I'll second the motion. A motion in second, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And post same sign, motion carries. Item number sixty is authorize staff to purchase, pursue negotiating with access or other appropriate entity relating to obtaining reduced rate billing for external inmate medical care. Supervisor Watson?
Motion for discussion?
So good.
Yes, I've asked Deputy County Administrator LeVak to speak to this issue, so we can get a little clarification on it.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Sockwell, Supervisor Watson. Horizon Health is our contracted inmate healthcare provider. They provide our inpatient care... They provide our inpatient care when it can't be done in the jail through KRMC. In reviewing our bills and the boards aware, we've had several contingency transfers late in the last fiscal year, it became obvious that we were paying essentially 180% of Medicare reimbursement to KRMC through that contract with Horizon. We've since met with KRMC and Horizon. Horizon has renegotiated their rates with KRMC on our behalf, and that's now down to 155% of Medicare reimbursement. We also began talking with Access, which has indicated they are willing to enter into an IGA with our county to provide even lower rates for those inmate inpatient healthcare services provided at KRMC. However, before moving forward with that, we pulled the minutes of the resolution back in 1983 from when the board actually transferred the hospital assets to Hospital District Number One, and there's actually a provision in there whereby the hospital district or its lessies or assinees need to engage in good faith negotiation to provide rates as low as only 25% above the federal reimbursement. So what we're asking for is permission to pursue both the Access potential IGA, as well as to go back with Horizon on our behalf to renegotiate with KRMC for lower rates in accordance with that prior resolution of the board from 1983.
Any other further questions? I would say at the same time, I would look at going back if they overbilled us all these years.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We haven't, unfortunately, haven't had an agreement with them in the past, but I think this prior board resolution, albeit old, it still is in effect, and it will provide us a basis to try to negotiate lower rates.
Question I have is what do you anticipate of the cost savings?
Between sixty and 120,000 a year, it really depends on how many inmates go in for inpatient care. It does not cover outpatient or diagnostic services.
Significant dollars. Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, have a second?
I'll give a second.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And post same sign, motion carries. Item number sixty-five, approve and authorize Stephen Lutowski to sign Pierce Ferry LLC well-site agreement. Supervisor Watson?
Motion for discussion?
Second.
Thank you. I just have a question for Mr. Lutowski. Would you like to come out? How many years have we been using this well and the generator?
Yes, Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Watson, Mojave County has maintained an agreement for this well since June of 2009.
2009.
It's been a little bit over three years now, and we've been able to maintain the same rental rate of $800 per month since the 2009. However, we've been taking agreements in annual intervals, and hence the request by staff for board approval.
My next question is how, how long do you anticipate requiring that generator in the well?
Supervisor Watson, the agreement provides Mojave County access, unlimited access to the water well, which is powered by a generator that's owned by the Martin Group. So this is a permission for the county to utilize the Martin generator for operation of the well. However, the use is unlimited in terms of the ability to draw as much water as the county deems necessary to service Adolan and Meadview areas for road maintenance.
I guess that my question was, if we're going to be doing it for a long extended period of time, would it behoove us to look at a solar pump and a storage tank as a cost-saving measure? Any consideration for that, or?
Well, Supervisor Watson, with the generator owned by the Martin Group, the lessor, the county would have to kind of broach this with the owner of the generator, which is also used not only by Martin, but also the other entities that may lease the well. Mojave County does pay for fuel for the generator. The overall cost, to my recollection, is not substantial in terms of our use of the generator, and because it is owned by Martin, we have not necessarily looked at those types of options, given the capital investment necessary to hook the solar power up. It's a fantastic suggestion, particularly if the county owns the generator.
Thank you very much for your answers. I just was curious.
Thank you. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve and authorize Mr. Lutowski to sign the Pierce Ferry LLC.
Second motion.
A motion and second, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And post same sign, motion carries. Item number seventy-three is approved revised budget Superior Court Division VII revised amount available for buildout, 300,000, removing the operating transfer in of 165,538 from Superior Court to fill the gap funding. Supervisor Watson?
That was me to pull that motion for discussion.
Second motion?
My question is that when we okayed the Division VII courthouse in Lake Havasu, I thought we had all the funding in order at that time, and now we're changing things. I just wondered if we could get some clarification on this.
May please the Chairman, Supervisor Sockwell, Supervisor Watson, Administration, and Council. The initial request from the budget was to have the 165,538 come out of the general fund. It was not to come out of the fill-the-gap funds, because the fill-the-gap funds was approved through the budget process for Commissioner Carlisle's position. That was to be left open, and I think it was just simply an error that it was included within the funding for the buildout of Division VII. And my recollection was at the previous meetings that it was referenced that the contingency fund would be the potential source for the remaining buildout funds for the division. I don't recall that the board had actually approved the actual buildout of the court because of the unknown cost, because we still had not had plans at the time. And as I further recall, last month, I think it was referenced that it was this board's idea that it should wait until January, when the new board is in, to address the actual cost and funding of the buildout of the Seventh Division. I don't think that there was ever an issue amongst the board with respect to the $300,000 funding for the buildout coming from the Superior Court and the Justice Court, but the issue as to what the remaining funding was for the buildout, I don't believe this board had ever addressed.
Have any questions, Mr.?
You were talking about this was in the budget. I guess we'll need to get Mr. Timko up here. Both items should have been in the budget that we were talking about if it was that if the 165,000 was for Mr. Carlisle's court, and now it's somewhere else, but should have all been done at the same budget hearing, right? Shouldn't be any surprises there, right, Mr. Timko, with your numbers?
No surprises. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just to clarify, this is just to put our budget, to have the board put our budget in form with reality. At the time, when Judge Gertrude came and asked for the Seventh Division, he told us that everything was paid for, and they weren't asking for anything from the general fund. And so we assumed that they were going to be paying out of their fill-the-gap funds. If that's not the case, then we just need to have our budget reflect the reality that that 165,000 is not coming from fill-the-gap and has not been approved to come from any place else, so that at this point, the only budget that we could have for the project is the 300,000 that has been approved from the 410 that's sales tax funded. If at some point in the future, the board decides to fund this 165,000 from any other source, that would be an action that would need to be taken once the final price of the building was known. At this point, we just can't leave a $465,000 project on a capital fund budget when there's only 300,000 approved to fund it.
Are any questions of Mr. Timko?
Well, I certainly thought when we okayed this project, we had all the funding in place for it.
We did too, sir.
Chairman, if I could address the statement of Mr.?
That's good.
Thank you. The statement from Mr. Timko is inaccurate. What the court presented was that it had the funding available for the actual cost of the judge and staff for Division VII. That is what the court has said from day one. The court has further said from day one that we have 300,000 available for the estimated cost of the buildout of Division VII. So we did not ever turn around and come in front of this board and state that we had the monies available for both the cost of the wages, the salaries for the judge in Division VII, the clerks, and the money available for the buildout. What we represented is we had the money available for Division VII. We still have the money available for the judge and staff in Division VII, and we are being consistent in telling this board that we have 300,000 for the buildout of Division VII, and the remaining portion is what we have represented and requested from this board to complete the buildout.
Do we have a cost to build out from the designer?
We anticipate that by mid to end of next month that we will have the plans completed by Selberg and Associates. That was the under 50,000 that was approved last month, and at that time, we anticipate then having a updated cost estimate as to what the buildout will actually be.
It would be my position on this to delay this until November, until we get a hard, hard and fast figure from the designer, and then we can address the issue.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Sockwell, Supervisor Watson, just to clarify, through whatever avenue it occurred, there was a miscommunication or inappropriate allocation of money. The courts actually submitted their fill-the-gap budget to AOC for approval without that 165,000 transfer into the capital improvement project that the county through Mr. Timko had anticipated had been part of the process. As a result, that capital improvement budget has now got an extra 165,000 in it that doesn't exist from a transfer that cannot happen. This particular item simply adjusts that budget back down to only the 300,000. If and when the time comes that this board or another board decides to move forward with a project, regardless of whatever the cost is, additional funding source will have to be identified to complete that CIP, whether that be money the court comes up with or the county comes up with from contingency or some other source, that will have to occur at that time. What we do need to do, though, however, is to ensure that our budgeted funds are in fact balanced, and that's what this item does.
Okay. Now I understand where you're coming from. I'll make a motion to approve.
A second for discussion. My question is, you're saying that the money is in the construction account now, or it's not in the construction account?
It's budgeted in the construction account, but it has never been actually transferred. The fill-the-gap budget that was approved by AOC did not include that transfer of 165. Therefore, we can't actually transfer it over into the CIP budget, and this simply removes it from that budget and takes it back to the flat 300.
Mr. Timko, please, can you come forward? Mr. Timko, when we did the budget, was that in the budget? Was that the budget we approved? Was that 165,000?
Yes, sir, this is the way it was budgeted. Subsequently, they have not been able to get the approval for the fill-the-gap money to be transferred. I believe it's already been transferred, so this allows us to transfer it back and reduce the construction budget to what has been approved, minus this transfer.
All right, thank you, sir.
I guess, do you have anything Supervisor Watson?
Nope, I think I understand what's going on.
I understand where you're coming from Supervisor Sockwell, and I think we probably have to go ahead with your motion, but I would be happy to entertain looking at this funding again in November. It wouldn't bother me a bit. We do have a motion and a second in front of us, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any approve? Post same sign, motion carries. I believe that was all the items that had been pulled off the consent.
That was it Supervisor.
All right. Item number ninety, I will open the public hearing discussion possible action adoption board supervisor resolution 2012-153 for zoning use permit. I do have people signed up. Quite a few people signed up. Kathy Taggett Hicks.
My name is Kathy Taggett Hicks. I'm acting as the owner's agent for an adjacent property on this site. I put a picture on there that shows this area. This is for a heliport application that they made, and we have no problem with an ultimate approval of the heliport. Several months ago, I processed and was successful in getting a ZUP for a heliport across the street from the heli stop. This is the requested site. This is the site that I processed. Our concern is that they, this applicant put into the FAA an application and received approval on a permit that had a purposeful omission of the fact that we have an existing heliport right at that site. And when I looked at the, we were not concerned with this because we've always had open disclosure in this area, but when I look at the permit further, their flight path goes directly over our existing heliport site. So this is their permit, and that triangle piece there on the bottom is where our existing heliport site is. So it's clear that there's a conflict for these two to be right here. Ultimately, what I asked was that, at the P&amp;Z was, I said, that, excuse me, that this applicant would go back to FAA and disclose the fact that there's an existing heliport across the street so that there was no conflict. We all know that we can have multiple helipads in this area as long as everybody is aware of them and they're processed appropriately. This permit does not do that. I spoke with the owner, he indicated that there was no place on the application to identify that site across the street, and when I looked at it, it's clear that there is a place right here at the bottom. They were clear to identify a billboard and power lines, but failed to identify an existing heliport across the street. At this point, I would ask that you please require the applicant to go back to FAA, disclose the fact that there's an existing heliport, and either get approval from the FAA that it's okay for this direct flyover, or have them adjust the flight pattern, move it a little bit to the north so that there is no obvious conflict. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions Supervisor Watson?
Yes, I do have a question. Have you had a chance to talk to the owner of the last stop to see if he'll do that?
We did. We met, we had a telephone conference call last week with their attorney and the owner, and we spoke openly about this, and I reiterated the fact that I don't have a problem ultimately with the helipad, but I have a major problem with the FAA flight pattern directly over this one. And like I said, he indicated there was no place on the application. They also indicated that they verbally told the FAA that there was a helipad there. But two days before the P&amp;Z hearing, I spoke with the FAA inspector, and he told me he had no idea it was there, and that if I wanted to process a permit, you know, he had no idea it was there and that if I wanted to process a permit, you know, he would look at it. But what this does is create a situation where if I go back to the FAA, permits are not required for helipads at the FAA, but if I ever chose to, it's clear that this has, this goes right over the top. So, we did speak about it. He did not indicated that he would, he did not indicate he was going to do that, and that's a huge concern.
It's a huge concern for me. I will say this, that I have talked to the owner, and he assured me that he would contact the FFA to let them know that there would be a parallel approach to helicopter pads, and that he assured me that the FFA would be appraised of that.
Good.
That has not occurred, and I'm hoping that this can be resolved. I do believe that the overall project is worthy, and it'll also bring additional infrastructure to that area, such as a fire department, fire response, and emergency response for heliporting folks from that area. We have a tremendous amount of traffic accidents in the area, so just like to thank you very much for all your input.
Thank you.
I have a question. There's, I have a letter that was received from the FAA. There are listed several conditions that are to be met. First one is the landing area is operated for private use only. I don't, it's my understanding that this is not going to be for a private use only, that it will be used as a commercial landing pad for people that are being transported out to the Grand Canyon area. That is my understanding on this. And these are, all of these conditions, I feel, should be met, and I think there needs to be some clarification on that one, too. I have a problem with that.
The FAA does identify this as a private, but it is misleading because on a private, the owner of that site can identify anyone for its purposes. And I'm sure they're going to want to speak on this, but they do have a qualified person, but it is strictly for commercial uses, so you're correct.
Yeah, okay. Also, is there, how many more people do we have to speak on this?
One, two, three. All right. Chief Mark? Hert? Ruff?
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. I'm the chief of Lake Mojave Ranches Fire District. We respond to that area. We cover roughly 2,000 square miles in our medical CON, and we're supporting this because we need an area that's safe to land a medical helicopter at night, especially in the bad weather, inclement weather. It just, putting it down on the highway is too dangerous. So, a lot of times, we're out there by ourselves for a long time, so, anyway, that's why we're supporting it. In addition to that, we're putting a satellite station out there that's going to give us a little bit quicker response times to White Hills, as well as the highway and the dam, so, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Thank you.
Jay Bidwell?
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Watson, Supervisor Sockwell, I'm the attorney for the applicant. With regard to some of the issues, the FAA authorizes the helipad. There's two separate requirements that obviously the applicant has attempted to do. One is for the zoning use permit before yourselves, as well as the FAA safety approval. They have issued that approval, and on the application, a private landing area essentially allows the owner to have whomever they wish to land there. It's not for public use. It's solely for private determination as to who may use the helipad. That's what the case is in this landing area approval or proposal. And if there's any further questions, with regard to the flight path, the helipad across the street has not been applied for with the FAA. As a result, there was not a designated helipad to the FAA. So, as a result, that was not included on the other considerations portion. However, we are certainly willing to work with the other helipad that was approved by the county in the event that there's any issue. In addition, there's visual flight rules that cover any safety concerns with regard to this helipad. If you have any other questions?
No, thank you, sir. Mr. Mark Sippel?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors Watson and Sockwell. Our position, Mark Sippel and I represent the Triangle Air Park, which is the big private airport south of this, and we feel there's been a collision here, a lack of data to the FAA. There's been a failure of disclosures. Certainly, this board of supervisors establishing the helipad that Ms. Taggett Hicks spoke of, that certainly could work very well for the safety provisions of the fire department. The definition, Supervisor Sockwell, of a private use airport refers to owners and guests. And if you look at some of the insurance issues, guests, I don't believe, would cover the volume of tourists who would justifiably want to see this place and look at and participate in with regular flights in and out. What we're concerned about especially is that when you look at a zoning use permit versus a whole area plan, this is going to be a highly developed area for helicopters going in and out, and this is the San Diego booklet on heliports. We don't have anything even close to that for this county. We think that the zoning permit use is just not sufficient for this board to allow this kind of safety issue, this kind of traffic use, this kind of what's going to be commercial. There's going to be people paying monies to come in and out of this location on a regular basis. And while we are greatly in favor of growth, it should not come at the expense of safety issues and of this county's right to plan and to organize. There's no mention of the 93 area plan in this. We think that this is something that should be delayed further for further work and workup.
Any questions, Mr.? You said you represented somebody, what's the name of this park?
The Triangle Air Park that's operated by the Boulder City Aero Club. It is a subdivision, if I may point out, this is the same diagram Ms. Hicks used. That is this area here. There is a, the regular runway running here, and this is an auxiliary airfield taking off into the wind. There's going to be conflicts there. This is not a regulated airspace such as Las Vegas or Phoenix, but the time is coming, and we would ask that this be given the opportunity for our planning and zoning department to take the care and to think through some of the regulations, some of these restrictions. Certainly, the public benefit to this is huge. However, this is supposed to be a private use airport and guests, not the volume of tourists that will be coming through. We've had difficulties with the roads, with tour buses. How much worse can it be with air travel? That's the safety issue.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ballard, do you have anything to add to this? This went through planning and zoning, right?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, yes. This did go through the planning and zoning department with the vote of five to zero. One commissioner owns property in the area, so they did recuse themselves. Many of the issues, such as whether or not the three, the two heliports and the private airfield at Triangle Air Park will operate safely with one another, the department and the commission considered those actually, the safety issues, issues for the FAA. They did issue a series of recommendations, such as, you know, strict adherence to some of the visual flight rules, as well as maintaining an open communications line where the pilots going in and out of those three facilities maintain the same frequency and continually talk to one another so they know each other's location. The zoning ordinance, Section 27A of the zoning ordinance, which is where the board gets the authority to issue the zoning use permit, does not distinguish between private and public airfields. And my understanding of the FAA's distinction is that the public fields are the general aviation aircraft fields. So, basically, anybody who's in the air can request permission to land where the private fields are restricted to particular companies or particular individuals. This would, this particular heliport will be for commercial use. It will be for one of the companies who conducts the flights to the Grand Canyon. I might also add that the heliport across the street basically has the same type of approval.
Thank you. Any other questions? Does anybody, anybody else like to address the board? We have a public hearing. Hearing now, and I will close the public hearing. It was the pleasure of the board.
I'd like to make a motion to table this item for, until the next meeting, for parties to be able to converse and maybe work this out or adjust their application to the FFA.
I'd also like to see it referred back to staff for further.
No, I'm not referring it back to staff.
You're not going to refer it back to staff?
I just want them to be able to work together, possibly rework with the FFA for clarification on parallelism on their approach, and give them 30 days in order to do that, and bring it back in 30 days.
The thing that I'm, the thing that I'm getting at is I can basically see a safety issue for both sides, and I think that should be looked at.
Yes, my thought on this is we have one, one group that hasn't even got their permit from us yet complaining about a group that's here today to get a permit from us. The other group, they've been there, they had no complaints about our process when they got their permitting done through us. I understand what you're saying. I'm concerned about the air traffic and those issues, but I don't think that falls under our purview. I mean, anytime we start getting involved with having somebody sit down with another group that we can't control, it's not like we're P&amp;Z, where we can say, you got 30 days. I mean, we're denying a business, and sometimes it costs some money. That's my only thought. I'd like to see businesses up and running and paying us taxes.
Certainly, and I do, too. And that's why I made reference to the fact that there'll be a pretty good investment, infrastructure and safety out there. And certainly, we can't overrule where we have no jurisdiction as far as FFA is concerned, but we can give them the opportunity to discuss it, possibly bring remedy themselves. That's my only thought behind that.
We have a motion.
I'll second your motion.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any impose? Aye. Motion carries. We'll take a five-minute recess.
Otherwise, you can leave and you can point somebody. You say, well, you can play around, you do the management. You don't have any authority beyond that.
Well, Chris, I hope it works because they left. Oh, okay, they moved forward, okay. All right.
We're just trying to like that now.
Yeah, okay.
He just wants to have a speed transition, he wants to point somebody. He doesn't have, I don't think he has a plan or anybody's on.
We'll see, we'll see if he comes up with a name.
Are you ready, sir?
Item, jeez.
Ready, Chris?
Yeah.
We've been here that long.
We'll call the meeting back to order. Item ninety-one is a public hearing which I will open, rescind and cause a property revert from a CRE zone to its former zoning classification of AR. I have no one signed up to speak on it.
I approve the rescension on item ninety-one.
I, I, I will second for discussion. Supervisor Stockwell, this, this project is, is a large project and I know they've had some problems with the recession getting it going and, and I would suggest that if, if we could, continue this for thirty days and let them get a chance to meet with PNC because, and I think they can bring forward some things, so maybe keep it ahead if that would be okay.
Then, in case, in that case, I will change my motion and delay any decision on this for thirty days.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number ninety-two is a public hearing which I will auction, will open, adopts the Mojave County Ordinance twenty-twelve dash oh-five, amend the Mojave County zoning ordinance, section nine and section twenty to provide for learning centers and commercial zones. Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. If I have anybody here from the public who wishes to address, I have no one signed up. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion's approved.
Second the motion.
Motion second, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could just interrupt for just a sec. On ninety-one, just to clarify, you continued for thirty days or did you?
Of the next board meeting.
Next board meeting, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Next board meeting is November fifth, which is not thirty days.
Will it be enough time, Chris?
Mr. Chairman, it will be enough time on item ninety-one, yes.
Okay, that will be enough time. I think Supervisor Watson was in charge of counting, he obviously messed that up. Item number ninety-three, discussion possible action, acknowledge the twenty-twelve Kingman Industrial Park Building Bridges to Business retention and expansion report. If we could have a brief presentation by Travis Langenfelter, no, this doesn't look like Travis.
I'm, uh, my name is Bennett Bradley, I'm with Mojave County Economic Development. Good morning Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Watson, Supervisor Stockwell. I appreciate your time this morning and would like to take just a few minutes to provide you with the key findings of the two thousand twelve Kingman Industrial Park Building, Building Bridges to Business B three final report. In addition, I will also be sharing some impacts from that survey. Early this year, Mojave County Economic Development Department partnered with the Kingman Airport Authority to conduct the two thousand twelve Kingman B three survey. Mojave County's Economic Development Department uses B three information system to evaluate, understand and report regional workforce and business opportunities and issues. This diagnostic tool makes it possible for staff to communicate the concerns of regional industry leaders to our elected officials and executive management. Armed with this local economic information, county leaders are able to make data-driven decisions concerning allocation of limited economic development resources. The main objectives of the county's B three program are to enhance the county's relationship with its existing businesses and by keeping lines of communication and dialogue open, directing regional business support programs where they are needed, such as workforce training, financial assistance, state-level incentive programs, and resolving current regional economic development issues and concerns. We want our companies to know that Kingman is interested in their continued advancement and growth and that we are here to assist them through their growth plans while retaining them within Mojave County. Economic development staff has conducted a series of interviews with management of companies located within the industrial park. For this B three port, we surveyed twenty industrial and manufacturing companies. Interviews were conducted over a six-month period between January two thousand twelve and June two thousand twelve. Survey instrument was, with a series of specific questions that focuses on information in the following specific areas: company's value to the community, the growth potential of businesses, risk of downsizing or relocating, company satisfaction with community and services, existing or emerging issues that pose a threat to these businesses. At this time, I would like to go over some of the key findings of the B three survey. Basically, more than eighty-five percent of the company, companies interviewed were involved in manufacturing and distribution. Manufacturing and distribution are two of the sectors that were called out in a recent two thousand ten targeted industry analysis report, and our team has been aggressively pursuing these industries. Here are two examples of recent marketing campaigns. This one'd be for manufacturing, and this is for distribution logistics. The largest business sectors represented by the survey participants were building and construction and durable goods producers. As we all know, the building and construction industry was one of the hardest-hit industries at the start of the recession. The industrial park employment prior to the recession was at about two thousand four hundred and forty-one employees. This took into account many of the companies out there. From two thousand eight to two thousand ten, that employment fell to one thousand seven hundred and forty-six employees. This was a twenty-eight point forty-seven reduction in the workforce. Since two thousand ten, we began to see small employment increases. The current employ, employment is somewhere in the area of one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five employed. Uh, this was a nine percent increase over the recession low. The total company sales indicator is a quick way of evaluating the company's relative performance and health. Within the Kingman Industrial Park, the two thousand nine surveys showed that thirty-nine percent of the companies said that their sales were decreasing, while only twenty-two percent of the companies surveyed said that their sales were increasing. It was shortly after this survey that we sold the South, uh, we saw South Wire plant closed, and in two thousand eleven, Gelledwyn, a door and window manufacturing plant, closed their doors, and they actually sold their building. Both companies have been in the community for over twenty years, and both companies service the building and construction industry. We fast forward to two thousand twelve, the numbers have changed. Only five percent of the companies interviewed said that their sales were decreasing. Sixty percent indicated the total sales were currently increasing. This graph is a pretty good indicator that we have seen the bulk of major business closures and employee layoffs at the industrial park. Let's look at the workforce. Uh, the workforce within the Kingman Industrial Airport received above-average ratings, with overall productivity of workers rated at the high, highest of five point four nine. This is on a scale from one to seven. Employers were mostly positive about the workforce. In the two thousand nine survey, the workforce average was about four point seven seven. The two, two thousand twelve survey came in at about, at about four point seven six. So, the survey indicated that the satisfaction with work, workforce has remained relatively level. To get this number trending upward, the Kingman, Mojave Manufacturing Association has partnered with MCC, Mojave County Workforce and Economic Development to develop a mobile training unit which can be transported to different manufacturing sites, and they can provide specific training that fits that manufacturer's needs. And with a, with a county as large as ours, this just makes real good sense. Industrial Park Services, one of the things that the businesses said that they'd like to take away and get worked on had to do with the roads out at the airport. The current condition of the roadways was, was the number one issue that park tenants would like to see addressed. When you compare the two thousand nine survey with the two thousand twelve survey, the frustration has grown more evident. One of the more resounding comments was, with the collective impact that our companies bring to this community, we would like to see the deteriorating roads addressed. As part of the, the survey, we also calculated for the first time the overall regional economic impact of the twenty interviewed companies to the Mojave County's region. Fiscal impact analysis determines the public revenues that are generated by a particular economic activity. The primary revenues, i.e. the, the taxes and the fees of local county and state governments, are determined in order to examine how any activity may affect various jurisdictions. So, let's quickly go through these numbers. Um, the direct impacts are, um, with those twenty companies, there were one thousand two hundred and seventy-one direct jobs. That's fifty-two million seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars in wages. Uh, the total direct economic output of one hundred and fifty-five million one hundred and fifty-one thousand. The indirect impacts were an additional two hundred and three indirect jobs, seven million seven hundred and thirty-five thousand in wages, and additional indirect economic output of twenty-four million one hundred and ninety-four thousand. When we add in the induced impacts, we see even more significant impact, an additional four hundred and fifteen induced jobs, fifteen million twenty-six thousand in wages, forty-two million one hundred and fifty-three thousand in additional economic output. In the last column, we can see the total impacts, direct, indirect, and induced, is one thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine jobs, seventy-five million four hundred and eighty-one thousand in wages, two hundred and twenty-one million four hundred and ninety-eight thousand in total economic output. Second chart, uh, we get a breakdown of which industries those six hundred and eighteen indirect and secondary jobs go to, um, in which case they'll be most likely created. Um, in the last column, uh, we see that total number again of all the jobs combined. This last chart shows us the impact these companies bring to regional government. Uh, the impact from secondary revenues are eight hundred and fifty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. The impact from private, pri, uh, primary revenues of real estate taxes, when you, um, add that in, that kind of is supposed to be over there to the right, but you get another seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, and then, um, which brings the total to one million six hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety. Uh, keep in mind that these economic and fiscal impacts, they do not, uh, represent all the businesses within the park. Uh, if we were to get a hundred percent response rate from all the industry, the impacts would be increased dramatically above the numbers we have shared with you today. Thank you very much, are there any questions?
Any questions Supervisor Watson?
Yes, I have a question. Uh, thank you Bennett. Currently, the, the Kingman Manufacturers Association is attempting to put together a, a total information packet. I understand you folks are taking the lead on that.
That is correct, yes.
And that'll include all the people at the air, at the airport?
I believe so. In that marketing piece, uh, we've just been, that's just been brought to our attention, so, um, we'll be taking the lead on it, and if all the businesses are included, all the participants that want to participate are definitely, uh, you know, um, would like them to.
Okay. Uh, just wanted to add to this, uh, I ran into Doug Adams, the manager at, of the steel plant yesterday, and, uh, he would like to be, uh, if you'll go down and visit with him, he'll add that information to your report as far as the regional basis.
Okay.
And I'd also like to recommend that we could contact the people at the mine, uh, that you might want to include that in your regional impact.
All right. Yeah, I've, I've actually, uh, been in touch with Doug many times, he's participated in other surveys, um, outside of the airport, um, so I have a relationship with him. Um, any contacts that you have at the mine to get up those chain, I would appreciate it, anybody.
Sure, I'll make sure you get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And excellent job, job well done, and I'll tell you, it's a real eye-opener to the economic impact of that four-square mile.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Stockwell, you have anything? Thank you. Mr. Temper, item number ninety-four, discussion possible action, acknowledge receipt of Governor's proclamation to an reelection twenty-twelve. Uh, do we need to hear from Mr. Temper on it or not? I don't think so. Do we have, have a motion to go ahead and approve the publishing, that a copy be published in the official newspaper of the county at least ten days prior to November sixth?
Motion's approved.
Second motion.
Second, no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number ninety-five, it's discussion possible action. Prove the appointment of a Bullhead City Justice of Peace effective January first, twenty thirteen until such time as individual's successor is elected and sworn into office as a result of general election in twenty fourteen. This appointment shall be continued on the following. Individual passing a background check in accordance with standard Mojave County hiring procedures. And we don't do that when they're elected, I don't know what the difference is now, but, the individual providing proof of revereancy within Bullhead City Justice Court prior to January, before I read all these, who made these things up? I mean, we just appointed a justice up in, in Colorado City who lived in Utah, for Christ's sakes, now we get to Bullhead City and we have rules?
The same parameters applied to Ms. Brown, she had-
We just ignored them up there, huh?
No, she had to establish residency by the date the appointment took place.
All right, individual providing proof of voter registration in Bullhead City Justice Court precinct as a Republican. All right, Supervisor Stockwell, it's your district.
How many people do you have to speak on this?
None, just you.
Then I'm going to make a motion that we approve Jack Christie to replace Judge Brady when he retires.
You have a second.
I'll second the motion.
You have a motion and a second? No further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, item number ninety-six, Supervisor Watson, discussion possible action, appointment of an individual to serve as Central County Manager starting January second, twenty thirteen until a new Board of Supervisors hires a new county manager. Supervisor Watson, I do have a few people signed up.
A motion for discussion?
Second.
A motion and a second, would you like to hear from the people first or?
Yes, that'd be fine.
Uh, Mr. Stephen Robinson.
My name is Stephen Robinson, I live in thirty-four, thirty-nine North Bowie Road in Golden Valley. Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Stockwell and Watson, members of the board. There was a similar discussion to this initiated, to this question initiated by then-supervisor Johnson at the special meeting of January seventh, two thousand eight, when you were extending County Manager Walker's contract. In that meeting, Supervisor Johnson questioned if the contract can be extended beyond a new board, and Attorney Ekstrom responded that if it was a two or three, you know, extensive period, it would be inappropriate, but a month is a transitional period and makes sense. Based upon that discussion, I recommend re-agendizing this item for the first meeting in January, when a new board is seated. As aptly stated in today's Kingman Daily Miner, there certainly has been no shortage of controversy with Manager Walker, of which I am personally aware. So, it would be a mistake to make an appointment ahead of the three new board members taking office. Perhaps Supervisor Watson misstated his attention on this agenda item, if so, I welcome and encourage the board to place this matter on the January's agenda, and perhaps even involve the supervisors-elect in any informal discussions after the November sixth election. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Liz Albright?
Oh, okay, on, on that one, all right. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Joy Brotherton?
Good morning Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Watson and Stockwell, Mr. Levac and Mr. Ekstrom. I, I have some questions on this, it, and it's certainly okay to discuss it, but I was wondering if we couldn't just go ahead, now we've got, we've got a, a program in place whereby the deputy county managers are taking, I believe, a month at a time or several weeks at a time in covering for, for Mr. Walker. Could this just be extended another month and have another rotation on that? Because if we are to consider anyone within this administration, we, we may have to change some policies and procedures. At this point in time, I can only speak to deputy county managers with the permission of Mr. Walker. I cannot speak to any department heads. I've tried, and they don't have permission to speak to me. I know that I can't talk with any employees who maybe have worked under these deputy county managers, so if we're to gather any information to decide, do we want one of the deputy county managers that is, within this administration or not, we're gonna have to maybe change this policy so we can talk to somebody and get some information. Now, after, I am also a candidate for the District Four Mojave County Supervisors, and after the election on November sixth, I know we can begin to talk to a lot of people outside, and, and I understand there's several people on the outside of the administration that are very interested in being a county manager also, but to speak to anybody on the inside, I don't know what we're gonna have to do to change the policy. I was hoping maybe that would be on the agenda today so that we could, uh, begin to do something and gather some information. Thank you very much.
Thank you ma'am. And there, that's all the people that signed up.
Is that all the have signed up?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we postpone appointing any, uh, of the deputy managers until January second. These guys will be, all the new, uh, supervisors will be sworn in, in the morning, uh, and I would also make a motion that we call, that a special meeting be called in the afternoon, and they can attack this situation then.
Mr. Chairman, just, just a point of order, uh, with regard to the first part of the motion, that's fine, but this board cannot direct the next board to have a meeting at a particular date. We, okay.
Okay, then, then I would, then I would just say that we put this thing off until January the second, and leave it at that.
Supervisor, is there a second first? I'll second for discussion.
Okay, you'll second for discussion. The reason I brought this to the, to the agenda today is we need to start putting the calendars together in order for this to occur, uh, and also identify the fact that Mr. Walker's contract ends twelve thirty-one of this year. If a meeting is not convened immediately thereafter, uh, we're sitting without a county manager. It's one of the reasons why I wanted to bring this to light today, also, uh, at subsequent meeting in November, possibly we can put the dates together for everyone to understand what dates will be available and how we can start planning our calendars.
Um, I believe we already have a calendar, don't we already have our meeting set for next year?
We don't have an approved calendar yet, it'll be on the next agenda.
So, it'll be the, the calendar will be the next, the next one, okay.
Okay, so, just so you know, that's the reason why I brought it up on the agenda. Don't want to take away the privileges of any of our new people or any other thing, just to identify the fact that there's gonna be several days in which we will not have a county manager, we need to address it.
That's right, you'll actually have one day, the first January one.
Until, or until the first, the first board meeting.
Present time, we have four. If four can't handle it, we got a problem.
Well, I understand that.
Is there any other discussion? Discussion, we have, um, motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign.
Could you repeat the motion, please?
I move that we postpone any decisions until January second, when the new board has been sworn in and they can take over.
Right, item number ninety-seven, discussion possible action, Mojave County participation in Governor's Capitol Christmas Celebration as part of the Arizona Centennial Holiday Season twenty-twelve. The Governor's Office is requesting each county provide fifteen ornaments in two distinct sizes to adorn a county wreath. Uh, I would make a motion for discussion.
Second.
We received the information from the Governor's Office wanting us to participate or the counties to participate, I just brought it forward, uh, to see if that's something that we wanted to do. Uh, we have to designate somebody to put it together, the ornaments for people that aren't. Uh, just for the public's clarification, there are certain sizes, there's gonna be fifteen wreaths, uh, that, that'll be down at the Capitol, they're all the same size, and we have to come up with fifteen ornaments of two distinct sizes. Uh, we can put them where, you know, there could be one with the Grand Canyon, one with mining, one with London Bridge, one with whatever, whatever people come up with, but they have to be done, and then they have to be on the approved ornament material, uh, so it's gonna be some work, whether, you know, it's not, it's not an easy task to do, but I think it's only once every hundred years, so I don't know, I just thought I'd bring it forward to see what the board felt, if they want to participate or not. Hearing nothing, then, I will. That was, that was the last item, I believe. We are adjourned.
You could've made a motion to spend the money.